All right, it is 6:00 PM.
Thank you. I will now call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to a special meeting on Thursday evening, October 14th. And Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Gothols is absent due to a conflict in the schedule. Councilmember Pappen?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Here. Thank you. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, when signed on to Zoom, use the raise your hand feature, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute. And these options for a public comment will remain available until I close the public comment for that specific item. We have only one item on this agenda, and this is election, redistricting, city council, special meeting, public hearing number four. And at this time, I would like to hand things over to our city manager, Drew Corbett.
Okay. Is everyone able to see that?
Yes, looks great.
Great, thank you. So, good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, members of the city council. I'm Drew Corbett, the city manager. With me here tonight is Paul Mitchell from Redistricting Partners. And the item before you is our fourth public hearing on the city's transition to district elections. I want to get started with talking a little bit about the outreach and engagement that we've had throughout this process. This has been a multilingual campaign with both digital and print materials. We've done two bilingual citywide mailers, and we've also done an insert in a recent recology bill. We've held five in-person workshops. We've done pop-ups at numerous events, including our Central Park Music Series, Movies in the Park, the Bayfront Cleanup, International Night. We visited the Congregational Church, and we've also tabled outside of Mia Rancho. We've done presentations to various community groups, including the NAACP, our Police City Services Academy. We've visited neighborhood associations. We've talked with board and commission members, as well as the Youth Activities Council. We've also collaborated with King and Powell staff to reach out to their families, and we've contracted with PCRC for additional outreach to underserved communities. One of the questions that has come up a lot during the outreach process is what does district representation mean to mean for me? What's going to change? And what we've said is that while council members are elected by district, they're elected by district to represent all of San Mateo, and that we believe this means that council will continue to consider the needs of the entire city. They'll have equal, they will continue to have equal voting power, and they'll take input from all constituents. And our plan is to incorporate these concepts into the council guidelines for council consideration early in 2022. As noted earlier, tonight is our fourth public hearing, and the purpose of tonight is to review the updated maps and get direction from council on the final revised draft map. On November the first, at 7:30, we'll be introducing an ordinance to adopt the final map, and we'll also be looking to get a council decision on the sequencing of the election. And on November 15th, on the consent calendar, we're planning to have the adoption of the ordinance. In terms of next steps in sequencing, our charter does require that three seats be up for election in November of 2022, and then two seats be up in 2024. Otherwise, council has pretty broad discretion on sequencing. We will be asking council to include sequencing as part of the ordinance, which again will be introduced during the public hearing on November the first at 7:30 PM. So in terms of considerations for council this evening, I would like for council to hold the public hearing, to provide direction to select the final map, whether that map is 3B or 3C, as well as any minor adjustments that should be made to the maps, and also direct staff to prepare a final map and ordinance. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm going to turn things over to Paul to talk about the maps in more detail.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and share my screen if that's okay. Thank you very much, Drew. I presume you can see the PowerPoint now?
Yes.
Great, thanks. So, thanks for having us here tonight. I'm excited to be with you at a real pivotal meeting, an important part in the process. Even though you've been going through this for a while, we always start by kind of going over some first traditional redistricting principles. And it's really meant not just for you, but also for members of the public that might be tuning in, so that we're all kind of on the same page. So, there are a number of criteria that have been upheld by the courts as traditional redistricting principles. And then in addition to that, we have further rules under the states, the California Voting Rights Act and the Fair Maps Act. But the most basic elements in the redistricting process are to first make sure that you're creating districts where each district is equally sized. And for that, we don't make that perfectly equally sized, but relatively equally sized within a 10% range, meaning that the largest district is no more than 10% larger than the smallest district. This ensures that everybody in the city has equal access to representation and equal access to their voting rights and being able to elect somebody to the city council. Districts also need to be contiguous, meaning that they're whole parts. Districts should be compact, which in some states is a real mathematical function, but in California essentially means that you're grouping together nearby populations. You're not bypassing some nearby population to go winding around the city to find some other faraway population. That you're maintaining communities of interest. So in addition to any protected classes under the Voting Rights Act, you're also looking at people as they live in the city. Are they living in a more urban area, more suburban area? Are they connected by transportation, or education, or housing? Are there other things about their characteristic that A binds them together, B provides a footprint of where they are, and C connects them to the policymaking for the city council? And then following other lines as you're drawing the districts helps reinforce that there's a rational basis for the districts. It also is something that is outlined in state law that a redistricting should seek to minimize the division of neighborhoods in a city redistricting. So, as part of the process of building that community of interest testimony, the, the city has done an aggressive job, as Drew mentioned, in trying to elicit public input to the process. We've done dozens of redistrictings around the state and nationally. We're working right now with upwards of 70 agencies, and your outreach so far has set a pretty high bar. 137 community of interest forms submitted, 27 district maps, and another 40 community of interest-based maps. So this is kind of a staggering number of pieces of input for a, it's probably, I can say definitively that in California, it's the most that we've seen for any California Voting Rights Act conversion from an at-large to a districted system. So you should be proud of that. The input has had themes that, some of which are specific to your city, and some of which are pretty common throughout the redistricting that we do. And the first is the idea of keeping neighborhoods together. This can be interpreted in a number of ways. One is to not divide individual neighborhoods. And the other is oftentimes you'll see members of the community identifying sets of neighborhoods that are, are, you know, cohesive. They work together. Maybe they think of themselves as kind of part of a bigger neighborhood community. Then the second thing is something we also see very common, which is that the city has transportation and the major highway, the 101, as a kind of a dividing line, where people recognize that, you know, these major arterials through a city can help define where someone lives, or who they see themselves as as community members and residents of the city. And to that neighborhood grouping together element, we got a number of submissions and input from the community electronically and on those forums, talking about the actual neighborhoods that they would like to see grouped together in districts. And so we've listed a few of those. But these are also things that you've heard yourselves at meetings and that you've seen in the community input. Where we've come in this process is through a revision of some draft maps. And these revisions were outlined at the last council meeting. 3B is a plan that right now has a total deviation of 8.7%. It only splits three neighborhoods, and it follows the themes from all of that public testimony that we've received. The changes from the last hearing were moving the Foothill Terrace neighborhood into District C, moving the 25th Avenue neighborhood into District B, and then fixing some census blocks along the northern border of District D. So, the map that you see before you has the districts, and you can see the coloring of the districts to define their boundaries. And then within there, you can see the shapes of the neighborhoods and where, where the boundaries kind of snap to those neighborhood lines. The second map, 3C, again, like the prior map, the same way that it's colored and where you can see the, both the neighborhood lines and the districts with the shading. This district, this plan also splits three neighborhoods, has a total deviation of 7.6. The, after the discussion in the workshops, the, this is where this plan came from. There were some changes, and the, the changes included ensuring that we unify San Mateo Heights into District E, moving some population in the central business district, and putting more of North Shoreview into District A as a reflection of the, the public input. So, this plan and the prior plan can be seen kind of side by side on this slide to show some similarities and identify any differences. The, if we look here, we can see the plan with the neighborhoods underneath. A little different construction. Now what's colored is the neighborhoods, and the outline is the, the district plans. So, we can see as an example the convergence of four districts into the central downtown business area. And then we can see how the, the shape of these districts around the neighborhoods in which neighborhoods are split in the redistricting process. Each of these maps comes with additional information. One is the full data set that goes with the plan. So in this data set, you can see that the total deviation in each district, none of the deviations of each district is greater than 4.1 in this plan. When we're talking about these deviations, we're talking about pretty small numbers, so just all in the hundreds. No district has more than 1,000, 1,000 or more total deviation. Below, in the second table, we can see the ethnic composition of the districts. And in this ethnic composition of the districts, you can see a couple of districts that have slightly higher Latino citizen voting age population at the 20% or 26%. And you can see the Asian population, where you have three districts that are above 20%, and two that are right at 19%, 19 to 20%. Within the packet, as you look, you can see each individual district with a little zoom to that district and showing the neighborhoods and the, the outside area, again with the same data tables. In the lower right-hand corner, we have a map that shows the district we're looking at within the inset of what the entire city is. And we can go through all of these. We're happy to discuss any of this in detail, but this is all of the districts in the plan for 3C. Now, the, let me see real quick. Sorry, it looks like I have 3C in here twice. Does that look like that to you as well, Drew?
Yes.
Let me go ahead and see if I can bring this up in a, I'm just going to bring this up in PowerPoint if that's okay, and I'll just switch to that. Sorry about that. Let me stop the sharing here. 3B and 3C. Sorry about that. Okay. Alrighty. So to go back, we have 3B and 3C. And when I do it this way, you can actually see the changes in the two plans. 3B with its population deviations and its total, and each of the neighborhoods inset, and the same thing with 3C with the total, the population deviations and its neighborhoods in the inset, so that you can see where neighborhood splits are existing. Now, as Drew mentioned, the place we're at in this process is to get to a point where the council, having seen maps, and I'm sure you have these in front of you as well, can deliberate amongst yourselves between the benefits of either of these plans with the goal of being able to come forward with a final plan that you would adopt as a, as your final lines. The, the questions right now, as are outlined in the agenda, is determining whether or not there's a preferred map, seeing if there are any specific changes that you'd want to have made, if there were to be any additional changes, then to direct us and the staff to prepare that final preferred map for the November first hearing, and then finally, to either ask us to create a number sequencing or to develop that number sequencing for the future, at the future meeting. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand back to Drew, and I'm here. I'll be able to open up the mapping software if necessary, and I'm here to help.
Thanks, Paul. And I think we're ready, Mayor Rodriguez, to hand it over to, to council for questions.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Who would like to start off with any questions for our staff or our consultant regarding their presentation? Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Hi, Paul. Thanks so much. I, I just had a quick question because I'm not sure if I'm reading this wrong, or maybe it's, it's inconsistent. But when I was looking at the demographic data and the percentage deviation between map C3 and CB, it actually looked like it's, those are, I'm getting different numbers than the, than the report that you just reviewed. So I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm looking at that as well right now. And what's important is that each of these is at a less than 10% deviation. Let me see what we have here. So I have one at 8.7 and one at 7.6. And when I look on the Plan B, I see 8.7. And when I look on Plan C, I see 7.6. So they do look right. Yeah.
So maybe I'm not looking, oh, because maybe I'm looking at the citizen voting age population?
So the, the way to look at it, and I can show my screen real quick, so I can see this. In the, I'm looking at the PowerPoint, and here in the PowerPoint, we have the population row, then the deviation row, and the third row is the deviation percentage. And the total planned deviation is the difference between the biggest district and the smallest district.
Right.
So here you have the smallest district is under by 3.5, and the largest district is over by 4.1. So the sum of those absolute values would be 7.6. Does that sound right? That's for Plan 3C?
Right. Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the city of San Mateo demographics. Some printouts, that's different. It's not branded. It doesn't have that branding on the top. Is that, anyway, it's, it's fine. We can move on. I did have another question about just wanting to understand what would trigger another, a redistricting event? Is there, is there some sort of threshold or, you know, percentage population change that we should have in mind that, that is set upfront? And is that, is that built into the ordinance, or is that dictated by the state? How, how does that work? I'm just, I think it's helpful to, to know that earlier in the process.
Sure. I'll speak to the state policy, and then I'll kick it to Drew, who can answer anything specific. He might know about the, the ordinance that you guys are passing. But the state policy doesn't allow mid-decade redistrictings anymore unless you annex a sizable portion of population. It has some rules that if you were to annex a small population, that it would go into the most adjacent district. But if you were to annex something, and from memory, it might be as much as 20% of your city population or something like that. If you annex something very large, then you would have to go through a mid-decade redistricting. And redistricting wouldn't be triggered by actual population increase. Let's say you knew that a whole new development came in, and there were, you know, 5,000 new people who were immediately living in the city. That wouldn't trigger a redistricting. It is something that you would just be dealing with at the next decennial census.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful to hear. Those are my questions.
Any other questions from council? All right, so let's open up a public comment. So if you're a member of the public wanting to either call in from home, or you're watching, you're, you're logged into Zoom, right now would be the time to raise your hand, so we can get a feel for how much time to allocate per speaker. I ask that you, if you do plan on speaking, if you raise your hand now and not waiting, it would be greatly appreciated. Okay, it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five.
We have seven. Eight.
Okay, I'm, I'm thinking two minutes. Anybody have an issue with that? One more? Do we have a two-minute timer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then. Rick was saying something, or Deputy Mayor Bonilla was saying something, but I couldn't hear him because I can't read lips.
I'm sorry. I just feel like three minutes would be better. There's only eight speakers.
All right, I can go with eight minutes. All right, let's do eight. I mean, excuse me, three minutes. Let's go, three minutes each.
Okay, three minutes, and the first speaker will be Roxanne Sire.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just wanted to express my interest for map 3B as in Boy. I think it's best to keep the Lagoon District together, and it doesn't introduce neighborhoods that don't have Lagoon interests. So the Lagoon has unique issues about dredging and pollution and sea level rise and FEMA flood insurance. So I just wanted to keep together the district that has those interests. So I'd like map 3B, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
One moment.
Mr. Mayor, can I cut in for one brief second?
Yes.
Maybe we could let anybody who's calling in about that Lagoon District, that part of the map, know that 3B and 3C all are the same. 3, 3B and 3C, when it comes to the Lagoon, they're all the same. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Deb. Deb, if you could unmute yourself. Okay, maybe we'll come back to her. Next speaker is Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and members of the city council. My name is Lori Watanuki. I wanted to voice my support for map 3C, which moves the downtown and its historic district into District C, which is the green map. There are similar community of interests between our historic downtown and the residents in District C who have a strong interest of maintaining their neighborhood character. It's important to preserve and protect our historic downtown, and our central western boundaries go to Railroad Avenue and will border with District C, which, which is in the green map. And so I'd like for you to give strong consideration for map 3C. And there's one more comment that I wanted to add for Paul Mitchell. In that map for District A, there is a portion of, of central in, right in the middle of North Central. And we did make that correction once, once before, because Central is not in the middle of North Central, but Central is actually part of District D, which is East San Mateo. So that correction needs to be made on the map for District A that was shown in the presentation.
Thank you, Lori. The next speaker is Jordan Grimes.
Yes. Good evening, Council Honorable Mayor. I'll just echo the comments of some others and say that I prefer map 3B as well. I think it makes far more sense to include downtown with the North Central neighborhood. I'm also a little bit confused by the inclusion of Hayward Park with Baywood and Aragon and other neighborhoods west of El Camino. I think that's a mistake. I think it belongs in District D, not District C. Just, you know, briefly browsing census data from Hayward Park shows that Hayward Park has a much higher concentration of renters and much lower median household income than the neighborhoods west of El Camino. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'm not sure how or why that happened, but I think it could end up disenfranchising people if it's lumped in with the wealthier, whiter homeowners in, in Baywood and San Mateo Park. That's it for me. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Jordan, the next speaker is Nicole Fernandez.
Hello, honorable council members. I just wanted to also voice my support for map 3B. As a homeowner in North Central, I think it is important that the downtown is categorized or in the same district as North Central. I think there are a lot of communities of interest between those two different communities, and I would strongly suggest 3B. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is George Derby.
Yes, good evening all. I'm also voicing my support for maps, either 3Boy, 3, 3 or 3Boy, not 3Charlie, primarily because 3B and 3 keep the downtown district as it is intact. The downtown is expanding east, not west. So the communities of interest for downtown, why in District E, as it was drawn in map 3, not in districts west of El Camino. So the people who will be most affected are east of downtown, and I think it's important that, that, that community be kept together for purposes of establishing their voice on the council. So 3B, 3Boy is my, is my preference. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rick Sakuda.
Honorable Mayor and city council members, we'd like to thank you for, on behalf of the Marina Lagoon community, for choosing map 3. That was our choice. And given the choice between 3B and 3C, I think that 3B, 3Boy is a slightly better representation. I think we're splitting hairs now, but in But in talking with our members, we felt that 3B would be the best choice. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rich Hedges.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor Rodriguez, Rich Hedges would like to endorse Map 3B. I'm not going to go into some of the Lagoon things that other people have done, because I agree with them. But this 3B, at least in the district in which I live, is tied together with Norfolk, which, for all intents and purposes, ends at Third Street. We do overreach slightly into North Shoreview in 3B, but it cuts off a big chunk in 3C, which I don't think is a good idea. Takes away from their effectiveness as a community. But not only that, they're in a completely different flood zone problem than the Marina Lagoon area. As far as transportation, 3B is tied together by the 250 bus, which visits both the Hillsdale and San Mateo train station, as well as the Norfolk shuttle, which carries people from the neighborhoods along Norfolk into the Cal train station. I can go on and on, but I think the popular choice tonight is 3B, for all the reasons that most of the people have said. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Adam Lorraine. Adam?
Uh-oh. Tess?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council, and staff. Adam Lorraine, I happen to be a Sustainability and Infrastructure Commissioner, but I'm speaking tonight solely as a resident of San Mateo. These are my views. I just wanted to quickly also note that I support 3B as in Boy. And frankly, plus one to everything Jordan Grimes just said, including particularly the comments about Central Business District with North Central, and Hayward Park potentially being a part of District D instead of C. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Chris Conway. Chris, we can't hear you. He seems to be having a problem too. Let's try Deb again. And she seems to have dropped off the call. So let's give one more chance to Mr. Conway.
And Mr. Conway, if you are listening, you can try dialing in as well. If you're having issues with Zoom. Okay.
I see you raising your hand, Mr. Conway. Go ahead and start, unmute yourself and start speaking. He's raised his hand again. I think he's indicating he's having problems.
I'm not quite sure what to do about that. Chris, or Mr. Conway, if you can consider dialing in at the number at the bottom of the agenda? It looks like it was Sandra?
Yes, I'll go ahead and call on Sandra. Sandra Weins, go ahead.
Yes, this is Sandra Weins from San Mateo, live in Harbertown, and I'd just like to reinforce my support of the Plan 3B as in Boy. I think the community around the Lagoon is really important. And I also think community around the transportation options that we have here, which is a little different than the transportation, say, more west of us. I think that 3B meets both of those community building activities. And I also think Hayward Park is a really important part of our transportation community, and I agree that it should be moved or included in 3B.
Thank you. We can try Mr. Conway one more time, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor, or whatever you direct.
Yes, yes, I'd like to. One more shot, Mr. Conway.
Mr. Conway, you should be able to speak now. You need to unmute yourself.
Oh, we have a phone call listener in. I'm wondering if that could be him.
That could be. Let me.
Or it could just be someone.
Phone number ending in 899. I've allowed you to talk. If you would like to unmute yourself. Press star nine to unmute.
I have a star six.
I believe it's star six.
At least that's what I say in front of every single meeting.
Oh, yes, star six to unmute, star nine to raise your hand. Sorry about that.
I'm grinning in my head. All right, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to move on. All right. We tried. All right, so I'm gonna close public comment, and we are gonna bring it back to council for additional questions or comments. And it seems like Deputy Mayor Bernia would like to kick things off. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I really don't have any questions. I'd like to say that I have looked very closely, and I agree with most of the public speakers, that 3B, right at this point, appears to be the best option. The map has been cleaned up. It's all very contiguous, fewer deviations. I think it's the right amount. Thank you.
All right. I think those are the fewest comments I've ever heard from Deputy Mayor.
More.
Deputy, or Councilmember Lee.
3B, I'm just realizing now just shared with us, council members, at 2:00 PM when it was published, and it hasn't been fully circulated. But the key takeaway for me, based on the demographic data tables, which included a summary, not just of ethnic backgrounds, but also including owner occupancy and renter occupancy, let's see, education levels, and income levels. Across all demographic metrics, it appeared to me that Map 3B really supported the interests of renters in a very significant way. It bumped up their rent from 39% to 42%. That's a 3% increase. And I think that that's a significant, that's a significant change that will support that population. Is the best option.
Hey, thank you. I'm not seeing Councilmember Pappin's hand up, so I'll go. You know, I'm really, I kind of feel like Map 3, just in general, like the bones of it, is a really good map. And I'm really indifferent to these various variations. I think they're all gonna be a great map. For me, it really comes down to, does it think that it makes? It's not gonna be a perfect map. We already kind of established that. So we're gonna have to be making some trade-offs. And it really, for me, it's like, is it better to have the western part of San Mateo Heights in that district with North Central? Or is it better to have the downtown? And I think that they both should be, if they could be. And we can't have both. And I do think, I do really understand the argument that when we talk about where the downtown business district should be, it's not like which council member is in charge of it, or which council member is responsible for it, or should be looking out for it. Because every single council member is gonna be responsible for downtown, just like every single council member is supposed to be looking after the entire city. But more specifically, we're really not looking at, like, who are gonna be the guardians of historical character? What we're really looking at is the residents in our downtown. Who do those residents look more like? And I think that, especially when we start building out a little bit more housing in our downtown on the eastern side, I don't think it's a great argument that those residents look more like Aragon and Baywood. It just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. So I could go either way. I'm fine with 3B. I think that it's just we're splitting hairs at that point. So those are generally my thoughts. I do think, this could be opening a can of worms that I'm not quite sure that we're ready to open. But I do agree with the three speakers that mentioned that Hayward Park looks like it's more like that Central District. It just does in my mind. I don't know if the numbers would work to do it that way. The last thing I want to do is throw out a great map that we have. But if we were gonna be doing, in my mind, a real, a map that was perfect, and we're putting together the neighborhoods that are really struggling with being on the transportation corridor, I think that would make sense to me. But that's just, that's just my opinion on that. Those are pretty much my thoughts right now. Yes.
Okay. You know, I mean, I would concur. You know, you're in the Map 3 zone at this point, and the nuances aren't particularly great. I said last time that I felt that North Central gets impacted by what happens in downtown, just as Central does. I find it interesting that we have now, there were a lot of speakers here last time, and the outreach has pointed to wanting San Mateo Heights with North Central. And I find it very interesting that that outreach and that input is nowhere to be found tonight. And I think we had Map 3C drawn to try to accommodate that request, because there are a lot of people in San Mateo Heights and in North Central that we heard from last time that wanted those communities together, and didn't feel that San Mateo Heights was that connected to, say, San Mateo Park just across El Camino from them. So I think that was the genesis of where Map 3C came from. But I concur that I do think North Central is impacted. I think once North Central thought it was gonna lose, having the downtown business district in its district, as it were, San Mateo Heights became less important. So I feel the same way. Map 3, if you're gonna go that route, these are little nuances here and there. So I'm a little agnostic about either one. But if it's the majority's will to pursue Map 3B, again, because I said last time I thought North Central was impacted by the downtown, and it probably should have that representative have that in their district so that they are responsive to the impacts of downtown and that surrounding neighborhood. That makes a lot of sense to me. So that's where I'm coming from on it. That's it.
So we've talked a lot about the map. I think that, well, I'll turn it over to our city manager to kind of steer us in the next round, the next, what else should we should be talking about? But I do know that we're gonna have to, the more we can solidify this map, the more time we're gonna have discussing the next most important thing, which is sequencing. And I wasn't quite sure, I took a little bit of notes when you put up that slide, and I think I have it somewhere on my screen. But in terms of what else we should be talking about this evening to get us, it says direct stat, yeah. So I don't know if we're gonna be talking at all about sequencing, or if we're just teeing off that discussion this evening, or are we done?
So I guess I just want to confirm, I'm hearing that there is, there are the four council members on this call who are okay with us bringing forward Map 3B as the final map. Is that correct?
I actually have had my hand raised for a little while. I'd like to add something.
Please, go ahead.
To this conversation.
Yes.
So I wasn't gonna say anything about Hayward Park, but I do feel similarly, that it actually should be on the east side of El Camino. And I wasn't gonna say anything initially unless other people brought it up. I didn't want to sound like I'm pitching for myself here, okay? But I feel like the neighborhood is sufficiently different from that on the other side of El Camino. And I don't know, it's my understanding here, I think, that we're supposed to come up with a final map designation tonight, so that we can move forward with the sequencing and so forth. Is that what's happening?
Well, I believe one option that we have, if we so chose, is to have a map, like, by next meeting, we need to have a map that's fully vetted, that we can go with. But that doesn't necessarily need to be one map. We could have, and correct me if I'm wrong, Drew, we could have two maps. So for example, we could say, we could ask in this conversation for staff or the redistricting partners to see if there's any possible way to make, like, to move Hayward Park into that other district. But then we'd only be choosing between what we're talking about now and that, and we have to choose one of those two. We're not going back again and doing it wrong. Is that, did I summarize that okay?
Yes, yes. I think you captured it very well. I think if council provides that direction, we'll go back and see what we could do. And then we would bring, we would bring back 3B and 3D, with 3C being no longer in play. And then from there, yes, we would need one selected on November 1st and finalized. And then at that point, we could discuss sequencing.
And if I might, Drew?
Please.
We have the mapping software. And if you were to move Hayward Park from C into D, it would make D overpopulated by 12%, and C underpopulated by 11%. So you'd have a 23% plan deviation.
That's what I was afraid of.
And that's why, that's why I didn't really want to open up the can of worms. But I do think that if there is a way to, just like all the other trade-offs we've had to make, I think that that makes sense, but can't get everything you want.
Yeah, so I feel like in the interest of representing the people in this neighborhood where I live, I should ask if we can try to work something out, okay? If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. I mean, Paul is that definitive? I mean, is that like the last word on it? You don't see it any other way?
I mean, I can show you the, right here, Hayward Park is what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Moving it from C to D, that's a movement of 2,670 people. And remember, each of our deviations is less than 1,000 per district. So it makes the total plan deviation 23, roughly 23%.
What if that 25th Avenue part that really, we've all agreed, doesn't belong in C anyway? What if that was traded for Hayward Park?
It's, they're both in C right now, so you're saying to put?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, they're both in C right now.
Yeah.
That does not make sense. All right.
No, I mean, I totally understand. I actually fooled with the map myself somewhat. But I thought I would defer to the expert, so.
Yeah. I'm happy I'm able to show that, you know. If there's, at this point, given where you are in the process, I think maybe being able to facilitate an answer to those questions now would be helpful. And so if there's other things that people want to see or their concerns, then it's something we can address.
Could we just say that, you know, it's looking like that 3B is the one to go? But just because we're on the fly here, if you wanted to take another stab at it, and the answer that we're expecting is, we couldn't do it, but we're just not shutting that door completely yet? Would that be a, would that be a possibility? And I don't even know, and we should probably check in with Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Pappin to see if this is even something that, a discussion that they're even interested in as well.
I'm interested, I'm sympathetic, but I've played with the maps, and I don't see how the numbers work without impacting many. see how the numbers work without impacting many other neighborhoods and in, in dividing them up entirely. And, and I don't think that the, you know, I, I don't think that that's a fair trade. And, and so we're just, we're in a really tough spot with Hayward Park. And I, I completely understand where you're coming from, Deputy Mayor, and, and from, you know, the, the, that neighborhood perspective. So I, I don't want to shut the door entirely, but I just don't see how the numbers work, having, having done the exercise.
All right.
Well, I think that that was what the public needed to hear here. Okay. So, I mean, it's been looked at, and it's very difficult being right in the middle of the city next to downtown amidst many larger competing areas. So I think we have arrived at 3B.
Leaving no stone left unturned, I think.
Yeah.
All right. What else do you need from us, Drew?
I wanna come back to something Paul mentioned about the, the numbering. Paul, can you talk about that a little bit, please?
Yeah, sure. The numbering process, the final plat, the final draft map that gets presented to the, to the council, under the California Voting Rights Act, it's required that it comes with a numbering system. It is your job to identify and select a numbering system for that final map at that hearing. There's an option for you to have us come to that with a numbering system that we devise. And then you would still have to adopt that, and maybe you could change it, and then adopt an alternate numbering system. But it is an obligation under the California Voting Rights Act for that final plan that you're considering to have a numbering system attached to it. So our goal would be to, if, to either develop now or develop by staff level a numbering system. But the numbering system that's developed by us isn't the final say. You still, as a, as a council, have to adopt a numbering system that goes with the map. The numbering system will not just determine the number of the district, but also determine when that district is up for election. So that will be a part of it as well. Generally, you have structures with, you know, even districts going in one election cycle and odd districts going in another. And we would just assign the district number and, and what election cycle that is. And then, given that you have, you're on different election cycles as incumbents, we would ensure that if there's three incumbents that are up for election in '22, that there would be three districts set for that election cycle, and work with your staff to see if we can come up with the most appropriate numbering system. I have a question for you, Paul. So, so I was talking with the city manager about this, and, and it's, and it was kind of hard to get too much into hypotheticals before we had a, a map. But now it looks like we have a map. It looks like, at least to me, I, I just want to throw out how I'm thinking about this, and then, and, and then see if you, if, if, if you think, what you think about what I'm thinking about. And, and it looks like, so we have, we have three seats coming up. It seems to me that, like, just looking at it from a city perspective, there are, there are two seats that should, or really good candidates to be put forth. And those are the two seat, I mean, two districts, I should say. And, and those are the two districts that have, I think, three current council members in it. And then there's one district where it probably doesn't make sense to have it going up, and that would be the, the North Central District with Councilmember Lee, who just won an election there. And then we have two that, that are, that don't have any representation on council right now, that it's, it's almost like a coin toss on those, to be fair. That, to me, just seemed like by far the most fair way of doing it. And, and I just wanted to see what, like, in your experience with other situations where you have, you know, sitting council members needing to run or not run, or just ran, I'm curious what your thoughts are on that. Yeah, I think that it's very common to try to do a numbering system that has minimal disruption. That's one clear way to look at the lines. The, another way that oftentimes agencies look at it, maybe there's a couple districts that are kind of a coin flip. It might be that if there's a community that has lower traditional voting turnout of any minority population, or, or a population that might have, might benefit more from being aligned to a presidential election cycle rather than a gubernatorial election cycle, that you might align it with that election cycle that's higher turnout. That is a much, much more significant issue if, like, you have a majority minority district, and a concern about a population that wouldn't have that district be effective in a low turnout gubernatorial election cycle. So maybe not an operative thing for you to be concerning yourself with. And then that third issue of, well, a seat isn't going to have representative until, you know, 2024, like you're forestalling their ability to elect a representative. Remember that they still have citywide elected representatives until those districts take effect. So in 2022, you'll be electing that first slate of three council members that will be from the district-wide, district-based system. And you'll still have two council members that are elected in the at-large system. So it's not denying a council, an area of a council member by putting their election date into the '24 cycle. So. Any other thoughts or questions by the council members on this?
I just, if I may, so, I, I mean, I just wanted to be as logical as possible. But what I'm hearing is that you have to do odd and even for sure. Is that right? So, okay. So that may not be, you know, I was thinking, let's just go counterclockwise and call it a day, as far as numbering. But apparently that may not play out, because you have to have like two and four and one, three and five, one in the respective different years. So.
That's traditionally, traditionally to do that.
Traditionally not required?
I don't know what, Drew, have we heard anything from the county? I don't know that the county requires it to have that. I have seen other agencies that do weird things like one and two and five are up in one year, but it, normally it's odds in one year and evens in the other. Has the county given us anything on that, Drew?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
No, we have not received that direction.
But there are different numbers, right? I mean, we could put the numbers anywhere. They don't have to be right next to each other or anything like that, right? No. It could be blue, red, and green. Okay.
Oh, they don't have to be numbers?
They don't have to be next to each other.
Oh, next to each other. Right. And it is that, that people do take into consideration whether a particular district will end up in a gubernatorial, gubernatorial race and a presidential.
Sometimes that's a consideration, especially if you feel like there's a population maybe that hasn't had effectiveness at electing people to the city council, and now they have a district, and maybe giving them a district, but then putting them in a low turnout election cycle doesn't allow them to actually elect a candidate of choice. Councilmember Lee, sorry.
Just to piggyback on what, what you said, Mr. Mayor, I, I came to a similar conclusion, keeping in mind that we want to have the least amount of disruption and provide the most amount of continuity and stability on the council. During this transition, it seemed to me that prioritizing what's now called District C and D, where we have incumbents that, that are up for reelection, I would hate to see us elect or opt to choose districts that would box out the opportunity of, of council members that have experience and, and have a track record from, from running in, in 2022. I think that that would be a huge misstep. And, and so for me, I think prioritizing District C and D in, in 2022 makes a lot of sense. For me, it's not a coin toss between the other two. I think that, you know, the communities of interest, especially those east of 101, have, have been yearning for representation. And so for that reason, I would also prioritize District A, which would, which would give us an east side representative on, on the council in 2022. So, so those were, you know, just kind of not, I, I don't know if we're actually having this conversation, or starting to have this conversation, but that was, those were my initial thoughts in terms of sequencing.
Got a thumbs up from Deputy Mayor Bonilla. I'm assuming agreeing with Councilmember Lee's comments. And, yeah, so I, I don't think, just to, to, to reiterate, I don't, this is just teeing up the conversation now, because the more we can kind of, while we're in the public right now, and we can all talk and not violate the Brown Act, we can kind of get something maybe solidified and get the direction. So make the next meeting all the more easy, all the more better, and it will allow us, be able to focus on the nuances, not the bigger picture a little bit. So. What else do you need from us, Mr. City Manager?
I, I think at this point, I have what, we have what we need to prepare for November the first.
Okay, great. Well, I want to thank everyone. This has been another great meeting, I think. And this meeting is adjourned. Go Giants. Bye.
Good night.
Night.